Like to call to order the November tenth meeting of the Clive City Council with the clerk. Please call roll.
Mayor Edwards.
Here.
Council members Klein.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Judkins.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mickelenany.
Here.
Everyone is here, would you please join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have the agenda. I know of no additions or changes.
With approval.
Second. Your motion, second to approve the agenda. Further discussion, seeing none, will all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose like sign, the agenda is approved. Next on the agenda, we have citizens' presentation. This is the opportunity for a citizen to approach the council on an item that is not on the agenda. And Pete, do we have anyone online tonight?
No, your honor.
We'll move on to consent, requires a resolution.
With approval.
Second.
The motion and a second to approve the consent. Further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote? And will the clerk please post that?
Matthew, I'm an eye on that. I'm having problems logging in.
Richard.
So that consent is approved by a vote of five to zero. Now move into our action items, beginning with public hearing. Did we publish the appropriate public notice?
Yes, your honor, a public hearing notice was published in the Des Moines Register on October twentieth, two thousand twenty-two.
Very good. Jeff?
Mayor, council, evening. I have for us the bids for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three sanitary sewer lining project. We received four bids, a little bit higher than expected, but grouped together pretty tight. We talked to one of the bidders right before we went out for approval or went out for bids, gave us some numbers. We upped those a little bit and they came even a little bit higher, but with with a grouping of the lower three bids, it looks like they're very competitive. We've worked with HydroClean before and recommend awarding to HydroClean.
Any questions for Jeff? If not?
Close public hearing.
The motion is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second to close public hearing. Before we do, is there anyone in the chamber online who wishes to address the council on this matter? Seeing none, would the council please vote? And would the clerk please post that vote?
I'm an eye on that.
So the motion to close the public hearing passes by a vote of five to zero. First item is resolution approving plans and specs.
With the resolution.
Second.
The motion and second to approve the plans and specs. Further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote?
Aye.
And will clerk please post that vote? That resolution passes by a vote of five to zero.
With your seat of bids.
Second.
Give a motion and second to receive the bids. Further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote? And will clerk please post that vote? Bids are received with approval by a vote of five to zero.
With the resolution worth the contract to HydroClean for two hundred fifteen thousand, four hundred twenty-nine dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
Motion and second to award the contract to HydroClean. Further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote?
Aye.
And that passes by a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Audit, Liz.
Good evening, mayor and council. For tonight, we have your request for approval for the annual financial audit report. So this is the third year that we've used ID Bailey. Brad and his team have been incredible to work for, great resource throughout the year. We've had some different situations come up, and so it's been really great to brainstorm and make sure that we're following best practices. Our process went really well, so with that, I wanted to introduce Brad Tyson from ID Bailey. He'll be giving you a summary of the report.
Good evening, everybody. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Good.
Great. Okay, as Liz said, I'm Brad Tyson with ID Bailey. I'm a senior manager. I've been, you know, working on the city of Clive's audit here for three years now. In the past, I've just kind of gone over a high-level overview of the financial statements. I think that's what I'll do tonight, too. And if you guys have any questions, feel free just to stop me as I go through. So the financial statements, which I believe you have in your packet, the our opinion on the financial statement started on page two. And you'll notice a little bit of the changes in the opinion this year. Some of the paragraphs were sort of flip-flopped around. Those changes were prescribed by the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants. And it basically gets more to the point right away. So you can tell right in the first couple paragraphs, it talks about the type of opinion that we issue on the financial statement of the city. And it is an unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statement. So basically, what I'm saying is anything that's presented within the document, you know, we have an unmodified opinion or we believe it's presented fairly and accurately. As you move on further down our opinion, it does a good job also of spelling out the responsibilities of the different entities. So the city is responsible for the presentation or the fairness at preparation and presentation of the financial statements. We are responsible for providing an opinion on those financial statements under two different standard setters. One is the is generally accepted auditing standards through the AI CPA. The other is government auditing standards, which is controlled by the federal government. And there's a little bit of a difference between the two, and I'll get into those later on in the financial statements here. So then the next thing I'll go to is management's discussion and analysis, which starts on page six and goes through page twelve. And basically, you know, I know this is a pretty big document overall. It's tough to read the whole thing, but if there's one thing you were going to read, I would I would recommend reading through the management's discussion and analysis. It's basically sort of management's words of, you know, what the year-over-year changes are from a governmental activity standpoint, from a fund level standpoint, from a fund balance and a long-term debt perspective as well, too. So it does a great job of sort of comparing twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two and identifying what the differences were for this fiscal year. As you get to pages thirteen through seventeen, those are the basic financial statements. And that's some more information basically about the governmental activities and business-type activities sort of aggregated together. And then there's also fund level information there, too, for like the general fund and all of your special revenue funds as well, too. So segregated in a little bit more detail behind that. The notes to the financial statements are after that, and those go on pages eighteen through forty-one, and they provide information, a little more information than was provided previously on long-term debt of the entity, transfers between different funds. They provide some information on the pension obligations of the city, as well as some jointly governed organizations, and that type of information as well. And then as you move further on into the report, there's some other information that's provided. Probably the biggest one you'd want to be aware of is the budget versus actual report, which is presented on page forty-two. That's usually one, you know, that that gets a lot of looks as you go through. So and then there's also some pension schedules in there that are provide more of a historical analysis of the pension information over the past ten years, too. As you move towards the back of the report, this is probably, when you get back to pages fifty-three and fifty-four, this is kind of where the difference comes in between just generally accepted auditing standards and governmental auditing standards. So one of the keys to the differences between those two is anytime you have an audit under governmental auditing standards, there has to be a report that's presented that provides information about internal control deficiencies of the entity. And it has to be publicly available. So on pages fifty-three and fifty-four, it sort of defines the different types of internal control deficiencies. You have internal control deficiencies sort of on a lower level. As you move up to more serious ones, it goes to significant deficiencies. And it also defines what a material weakness is, too, which is kind of like the highest level of internal control deficiency. The good news with that is as you go on to pages fifty-five and fifty-six, it kind of talks about whether or not the city had any of those. And as we have presented in the past, at the top of page fifty-five, the first kind of bullet point there talks about there were no findings to report for the city for fiscal year twenty-two. So no significant deficiencies and no material weaknesses were recognized as part of our audit process in reviewing the city's work papers and financial statements. So then, as you go through the rest of the schedule of findings and responses, there's also some information there that's required by the state auditor of Iowa. They kind of make us go through certain compliance items that they consider to be hot-button issues. You know, like your budget, any sort of travel expenses or TIP obligations, and just report on any sort of inconsistencies that we might find there. So there are two items there. I think one was very, very minor, and there's sort of obligation, or sort of items that were required to report without sort of any materiality limit. So I think in one case, we found a travel expense reimbursement that was that was reimbursed at a rate of two cents higher than it should have been. So obviously immaterial, but something that we have to put in the report as well, too. And then there's also some information about related party information there, too. Both of those that are presented are below what the state considers to be sort of the statutory limit for related party transactions. But we still have to present those within the finance report, too. So so that's pretty much the scheduled findings and responses, as well as the financial statements. I guess I'd just like to say thanks to Elizabeth and her staff. They've been great to work with and definitely made the transition from Joyce to Elizabeth that they're very easy to do to negotiate throughout the year. So with that, I think that's all I have to present unless, if anybody has any questions, feel free to let me know.
Questions for Brad?
Brad, do you have anything on a from a watch basis? Typical on these audience audits, there could be something that might show concern. Is there anything that would you consider a watch?
No, not that I could think of. No, so I mean, so again, kind of going back to the schedule finds and responses, we would, if we felt there was something, and actually, that's the definition of a significant deficiency, which is one of the internal control items that we need to report on, is if we thought there was something that the city council would want to be aware of, we would have to report it in this report. And if we did not find anything that we thought sort of required any sort of reporting or anything really of that, for that matter.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Brad or Liz? It looks like a great audit, and I'd suggest we approve the resolution.
Great job, Liz.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the audit. Further discussions, seeing none, would the council please vote?
If I could add, your honor, this, you know, during a transition, it is a challenging time in terms of interpreting between two different finance officers, and Liz and Corey did a great job and worked really hard to get this where it is. And credit to Brad and his team, too, for working through a number of items where we had to figure some things out. And as you can see, the end result is we're very happy with and a great foundation for us going forward.
Great work. Can we post the vote? It passes by a vote of five to zero.
And I'd say that that also reflects well on Joyce and how she left me.
Yep.
Very good. Richard?
Thank you, Brad.
Thanks. Tonight for you is the first reading of proposed ordinance changes regarding combining the Parks and Recreation Board with the Public Art Commission. This is something that was talked about as strategic planning. It's also been discussed by both the Public Art Commission, as well as the Parks and Recreation Board, and feel comfortable with the synergy that putting those two together into one Parks Recreation and Public Art Board will create with all the public art and projects that we're doing here in the next five to six years. The proposed changes are to combine it. It would be a monthly meeting with kind of on the same schedule as the Parks and Recreation Board. Of the seven Parks and Recreation Board members, five are interested in continuing on on this new board. And of the five Public Art Commission members, we are interested in continuing on with the new Parks and Recreation Public Art Board. Would leave us one open vacancy that will reach out to the list we have from either the Parks and Recreation Board or the Public Art Commission list that Matthew has to find a member to recommend as part of your appointments here in December. Also, we would also, when it comes back in December, we'd ask that the third reading be waived so that we could get the members appointed, and we could start with the first meeting in January. Be happy to take any questions.
Questions for Richard? If not, we're looking, oh, yes, go ahead.
Just real quick, why now? What's driving this to do this now?
So it's just something that's been talked about for probably about the last eighteen months. It finally got to the point with strategic planning that it got high enough there. We thought that the end of the year was just a nice natural break with the annual appointments with December to do that.
So there's nothing driving it, other than we just want to create some efficiencies?
Yeah, you know, just one of the things that we've been trying to do a lot more is with a lot of our parks projects, incorporate public art into that. Green Belt Landing would be one of the first where we actually are going to engage an artist to help incorporate art designs into the overall design of the project. And we see that being a synergy moving forward that really makes a ton of sense. Not, you know, taking the building blocks that we've had for public art with the art along the trail, the commissioning of different pieces, such as at the public safety building and throughout the community. And how do we kind of take that to the next step based on that twenty eighteen Public Art Master Plan to start to incorporate that?
What I would add to that, too, is this, it's a timing thing of the the members, too. We had a certain number of members that were ready to be done with their terms, and so we didn't want to necessarily cut anybody out. And so we had that kind of timing cycle coming up here, where we had some members that were willing to stay on, like the Parks Board, for another year, knowing that this was coming at the end of this year.
Got it. Thank you.
Other questions? Michael?
I'd note that ordinance number one one two seven, having been considered by the council, we voted on for passage prior to its final adoption.
Second.
All right, further discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote on the first reading? And the first reading passes by a vote of five to zero. Thank you. Next, we have presentations on the state of Clive's waters. Pete?
Thank you, your honor. Give me a moment, I'm going to pull up my presentation. Go ahead. Are you all able to see that on your monitors?
Yeah.
Great. So thank you, your honor. Happy to be here tonight to present on something we've all collectively been working hard on for many, many years, even before we got to the point of minting our Water Resources Master Plan. That plan, though, has given us a blueprint for how we want to move forward to realizing the vision that you all set in that document. Fortunately, tonight, I don't come to present all of this by myself. I am very happy to say that my colleague, Ray Tokahisa, is here with us as well. Our new Water Resources engineer, Ray, has done a wonderful job coming up to speed with all of the work that Clive has done historically and is doing an excellent job partnering with all the other departments to do the diverse water work that we need to get done. If there are no sort of questions here at the top, I'll jump into these slides. We'll move through them relatively efficiently, but please don't hesitate to slow me down if you have a question about one of these. First, representation of what all went into the Water Resources Master Plan. It was engineering, which is the H and H you see at the top. It was management, as we think about finance, staffing, cross-departmental collaboration, policy decisions, and communications, all the work that we needed to do to engage other partners so that they could be our co-conspirators, maybe, or were working with us to achieve this vision that you have all set. And that vision and prioritization is what is in the center of this Venn diagram. Here are the six vision pillars that you all established. This is our guide, these are our guideposts to make sure that we're on track. If we can't map back to these and also to your strategic priorities that you set on an annual basis, then we're off track. So tonight, if you see anything that we're presenting that we've done that we can't map back to this, let us know, because we want to make sure that we are consistent as we pursue this vision that you've all set. Not going to go through the big list here, but I want to call out a few of them. That top bullet, Water Resources, our city of Clive, cityofclive.com, Water Resources. This is now, if we ever have a question from residents about where do they start in their story, so understanding the story of water in Clive, how water shapes their lives, how they are shaping Clive's water, this is the place that we want to send them. It's a flexible platform, starts with very high-level information, very rich when it's presentation. It's that parallax scroll that you see with the maps that show the water expanding, images coming in showing different aspects of water resources in Clive. We want to keep using that as our starting point with residents. And from there, we can take them where we need to go. In this year, it was taking them to the Soil Quality Restoration Program and building up some interest in that, and also taking them to the Rain Campaign, which is the broader central Iowa-wide initiative to elevate water resources concerns and opportunities for residents and businesses. Obviously, we hired Ray, very happy about that. And that third point, we have got evidence this year that residents have started coming along. I don't think they were ever really opposed to all these water resources projects in Clive, but they weren't top of mind. That's changing. Is their perception of Clive's water resources accurate? Well, sixty-one, excuse me, eighty-six percent of residents responded positively when asked whether Clive's water resources were good or excellent. I think that's probably a little too rosy a picture for the state of Clive's water resources. We know we have impaired waters that are polluted still at Walnut Creek. We know we've got major erosion issues that we need to keep getting on top of. But what I take from that is that we've got folks who are interested. And with that now, we can do a lot of different things. But I don't want to be inaccurate, because the water resources challenges we face, as all of you know better than anybody, as long as you all have served, they are significant and are going to take steady work over the years and decades to come. Those are the top three I listed there. Are there others, though, that are on this list that anybody would like further clarification on? I will name that last one, then, the ongoing execution of the flood-prone property buyout program. That really is an initiative that Doug and his team have been carrying forward, strategic planning. We spend a lot of time talking about that. The Water Resources Plan acknowledges all that. It kind of encompasses it. But just because of its scale, it really is sort of an entity unto itself, and we'll continue to present on that distinctly, separately, because there's going to be so much action. In fact, I think at our next meeting, we've got a couple of grants that are going to be coming forward for your consideration that are related to that. Yes, sir.
Twenty-five percent increase of resident surveys from the last two years on, you know, what the, how they rate Clive's water. That's a pretty big jump. What do you attribute that? The storytelling aspect, communications, folks seeing, you know, the devastation of waters? What do you attribute that large of a jump to?
I think a lot of it is the storytelling that we've done. I think a lot of it, though, is we had some tough water stories in these last two years, surface water challenges. Fortunately, we didn't have a huge water event on Walnut Creek or Little Walnut Creek, but we were just on the edges of some huge storms that came through as well. I think the goats probably deserve quite a bit of credit. They're wonderful storytellers. This next slide actually kind of gives you a sense for the scope of those water stories from this past year. And the top left, you see our sort of hub for our storytelling. But then you've got, as you move to the right, all those students from Indian Hills Junior High, who went out into the green belt, working with our friends from Metro Waste, to tell the story about how we can do a better job keeping all of that waste from getting there in the first place, and also lifting up that ethic of stewardship for the rest of the community, showing a great example of what's it look like when you really care about your water, while you get out there and you help clean it up. You help be a good steward of it. We have big mailings that we did throughout the year, too. There on the left-hand side, you see our annual mailing that goes out to folks about flood risk in the city of Clive and some other things folks can do to be good stewards of water resources. There are the big picture with the scouts. Those are our mural painting, our mural painting crew. You see the goats as well. On the bottom left, you've got some students from the Milwaukee Apex Program who planted many, many trees out in the green belt, and that's just one volunteer opportunity. We have them all through the year. And our parks team especially does a wonderful job connecting people with those opportunities and pairing it also with good community education. Two stories that have had their ups and downs. On the far right-hand corner, bottom right, you've got an illicit discharge. That was about twelve, the ten, twelve months ago, exactly. It was October of twenty twenty-one when we had that as listed discharge into Indian Hills Woods. I'm very happy to report that when you go out to Indian Hills Woods now, what you see is a remarkably transformed landscape from what it looked like. And when we come in now with their vegetation restoration in coming years, it's going to continue to look more and more beautiful and be more and more sustainable. The Clark Street Bio Retention Cells, they are now up and functioning as they should. And we move now from construction into maintenance. All of this infrastructure, this green infrastructure takes maintenance the same way that the gray infrastructure takes maintenance. And I believe we've got a good plan in place to make sure we're covering that, not only in this first year, but in perpetuity. Now, the biggest story related to water resources this year, I would argue that that was our Soil Quality Restoration Program. It was a year-long effort, and I want to specifically thank our partners at Polk County, Polk County Soil and Water, Iowa Department of Agriculture and Land Stewardship, where our grant fundee came from, and really thank my colleague, Julia Maguire. She did all of the customer service on this, but not all of it. I mean, we're all out there, have a lot of touches, out there in the yards, raking things out. But I thank Julia, between the emails that she got out in timely fashion with accurate information, all the phone calls she took, all the payments that she helped facilitate. No way this program was a success without Julia. She did a fantastic job. And for those of you who don't know, Julia has a position that sort of splits between public works and community development as well. So thank you to both of those departments for giving Julia's time to this project. This is how we started our storytelling, with a few signs that were out in our parks and along the trail. And over the course of April through early July, we generated a one hundred and thirty interested households in Clive that wanted to do the program. Then we gave everybody the number, what their cost share was going to look like. We dropped down to eighty. And I'm starting to feel like, huh, are we going to hit that hundred mark or not? Because we're already on the hook at that point. We've gone and taken our contract out to bid. We were paying our contractor, no matter how many we had to come participate. Fortunately, then we put this sign out. This was the magic. This is what started getting neighbors talking to neighbors, your neighbors coming and talking to all of you who have participated as well. And there's no better storytelling, there's no better validation of a new idea or a new concept than a friend telling to another friend, hey, this worked for me. And we had that in spades through the course of the summer. We dropped down in mid-July to about eighty folks who were signed up. And then, as we put these signs out, we quickly got to the hundred and thirteen that we completed, plus then an additional forty that are on the waiting list for next year, almost doubling the number of folks that we had interested and had signed up in July just because of the ongoing storytelling we did throughout the summer. It's a huge part of our success. So here are our final stats. Hundred and thirteen households and one Clive Park. Almost got to a million square feet and improved, but nine forty-three, nine fifty, if you're rounding to a rounder number, that's a fantastic success. We also have ongoing soil testing that we're doing on those yards. We tested them before they received their soil quality restoration. And now, a year from now, we'll come back and test them again, just to see what are we seeing from both compaction and also the quality of the soil. All of these things come together to tell us how good is that it's sucking up the water that lands there and keeping it from rolling down into the storm, storm sewer system. The dollars that we were able to leverage, and it got a little bit more complicated than just our grant dollars and their cost share dollars, because we also were able to use funds from the Harbach Project, and I had some other project expenses as well. But when you look at the numbers that came in from the private funds, it looks pretty darn close to that fifty-fifty that we were expecting. Hundred thousand dollars from our grant from Idols, just about the same that came with private funds. The actual split ended up being closer to forty-seven percent city, fifty-three percent residences. The reason for that is we had some very large yards that hit that thousand-dollar max grant award. And then they had additional square footage that we were able to add up into our total sum. Any other questions about the Soil Quality Restoration Program and our success? Yes, sir.
Yeah, operationally, Pete, I thought it went really, really well, you know, both from your office and from, you know, is it quality that did the work? Where they really got good at it, were fast and did a great job. I like the fact that you're going to be doing some testing, so we can have some metrics that we can see really how, you know, how much of an impact that this S U R program is, has. And is there any other type of, you know, way that we can show data or we can really quantify this program? I know you're going to see it as, as we, you know, look at the lawns next year and spring comes out. But anything else that we can do to give some quantifiable data to the effectiveness of this program?
Yep, I'm going to trust our, whoops, trust our engineering team on that, because there are SUDAS standards about what does the quality of, what does water quality, soil quality restoration work get you for improved ability to catch water where it lands? So that's our standard that we would look to, to quantify this. I, we have not done that quantification yet for the total number of square feet here, but that's some simple math that we can get done pretty quick, and that's an important number. But the really, I think, probably more important standard that we should think about is, what does it look like actually in Clive? When we go and look at that soil a year from now, what are we actually seeing? Because we'd like to do this practice more and more frequently to meet our own stormwater requirements. But we don't want to just meet stormwater requirements in sort of definitions on paper. We want to see better stormwater performance in neighborhoods as well. So pairing up that lived experience with what the actual engineering standards look like is going to be So pairing up that lived experience with what the actual engineering standards look like is going to be important for us moving forward. I think our first big test case on that is going to be the Harbach neighborhood.
So building off your last comment there, any thoughts on how we build on the success and maybe, you know, do some more initiatives or do some different things or additional things in the future?
Yep, I have a couple of ideas. We're downloading right now with our partners at Polk County on that. Couple I would, I would share. We need to find out what our funding source is going to be for this coming year, knowing that we're not going to have the extra hands from Polk County to execute a program in twenty twenty-three. We also need to figure out then what kind of scale we can go to. I think that one of the most important things I learned from this is that the window of time you have to get a great result from the property owner's perspective is narrower than what maybe the government's, the SUDAS standards say you're going to be able to do it. We were, it was sweet in September, the growing conditions were fantastic. We had some rain that came alongside, so it didn't mean everybody had to irrigate to get germination of the seed if they decided to put seed down. We had people starting to see results almost immediately as that compost got integrated. And that created a really, a strong sense of, oh, I get it now, I can, this is, this is working. It's that bottom picture that you see on that slide here compared to the one that's right above it after an application had just been done. Giving people a sense of an early win and that this is going to be okay, that was key. Going past September worked for us, but we were in a riskier position. The weather could have gone significantly down for us. We ended up having some early frosty days that gave everybody a little bit of a pause, especially some of the folks who were seeding and wondering if they're going to get any kind of good germination or if this was going to be something they had to wait and watch in the spring. So just having a better understanding now of what that sweet spot is in September to do this is going to be an important limit for us to keep in mind for when we decide how big do we go in future years.
So any, anything else that we can do that you're thinking about on top of this, the SQR? Is there, is there other things that we could be doing to do that stormwater management and things like that, that, that some of this funding? I know, I know you've been talking about funding challenges, but.
Absolutely, and one of our slides, the very last one actually is one where I want to get to, to kind of pick that up. The one I will want to credit Councilwoman Judkins on, and that we talked with Polk County about this week. We had a great program because we had a great set of partners, Metro Waste, Quality Cut Landscaping, IDALS, with just in Polk County, sharing all their knowledge as well. We brought together a really, really great team. But Quality Cut was the group that was out there doing it. We need more landscaping companies to say, hey, there's a great financial opportunity for my business here. So what we're talking about doing now is putting a sort of a get-to-know soil quality restoration lunch and learn for these, invite the landscaping companies in. Tell them what we did and what we learned. It sounds like our friends in Johnston are going to try and go to one fifty this coming year. So we've got a lot to share there, but we'd want to bring them along, too, and we're going to have a big need in Harbach. So we want these folks to know about the financial opportunity for their businesses and be ready to bid when it time comes. So that's a project we're going to get going on here over the winter.
Thanks.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I have been told that to really get good results, many times a property owner will need to have multiple years of application. And my assumption is that we don't want to go back to the same places. If we do this again, we'd like to expand it more throughout the community. But as we do some of the research, is it possible to maybe build into the education some opportunities for landowners who've been participating in this to know that it may not just be a one-and-done situation to build up the soil to the point where it's really effective? I don't know. What are your thoughts about that?
Yeah, and that's part, going to be part of our sort of thank you and follow-up for everybody who participated in the program this year. There was a wide range of yards that we were working on, some were in good, good shape, some were in really, really rough shape. And you'd get, expect differing results based on that starting point. So we'll reiterate that with property owners and talk with them about it, more things that they could do to get good results with their turf. But also talk with them now that they've taken this first step with good water stewardship. What are some other things they may want to watch for that the city's going to do next? Rain barrels, not a huge amount of water that you're going to manage, but boy, it's powerful education when you see how fast those things fill up, fill up on just a small rain as it rolls off your roof. That's a program that we're talking about where we'd do it in a batch type format, build your own rain barrel type program at the Harbach Center or out at the Parks Maintenance Building or some other place. That could be a next step for folks who are starting down this journey. Just one example, but there are many others, too. So here's the map. Every dot on this map represents a property that participated in the SQR program for twenty twenty-two, hundred and thirteen total. George Lundberg Park was the park where we did forty thousand square feet, so that's, that's not on this map, just focusing on the residents here. The key in the bottom left is breaking out all of those properties where we did tests. The, the items in blue there are some of the, to think nineteen seventies into late nineteen nineties, excuse me, nineteen eighties. I'm having a hard time reading my own legend there, eighty-nine, yep. And then nineteen nineties into twenty fourteen and twenty fifteen to present. We batched those up into the three groups so that we could capture sort of generations of development style. The era of mass grading, where we had big developments that were created all at once, topsoil ripped out, taken away, shot thrown on top. That's what you see represented in yellow. Everything in blue was prior to that, and everything in red represents development that was overwhelmingly done after the post-construction stormwater ordinance was in place, which meant that when you disturb those soils or you built something, you had to restore organic content and you had to decompact your soils as well. And so we are curious, as we look at the testing we've done, are we going to see interesting differences between those red properties versus yellow versus blue? The one that I'm particularly interested in is that yellow versus red, but also the blue, just because those are yards that have been in place for a long time. What is the state of their soil health? So this is not something I would say reached the definition of sort of a research standard sort of work that we've done. Yeah, but it is still, I think, going to give us some interesting signal to help us keep getting better at this year over year. Okay, so here's the meat of what I'd like to get your direction on tonight. What we're going to do in twenty twenty-three, long list, and we can talk about all of these. These are all ideas, I believe, that have come before you in one shape or another, but it's those top six that I'd like to talk about tonight in particular. The Harbach Stormwater Partnership Program, standing up with the first member of our Natural Resources Team, standing up that team here in the first part of twenty twenty-three. Our neighborhood engagement around the wide range of things happening in the Northwest Neighborhoods, so many of which have to do with water and amenities that are close to Walnut Creek and our water. The community education about our irrigation and stormwater rates, which is coming this spring. Want to talk a little bit about the BMP inspection strategy. This is where we're going to talk about those private-owned BMPs and public BMPs that were a big part of the water resources master plan process. And then finally, what we might be able to get done this coming year with the cost share program for more SQR and a broader, more, sort of a bigger pot of money that could be used for a diverse set of water resources projects in the city using a new grant. So let's start about Harbach. We started before Rachel transitioned to her position and, and then before Ray was able to join the team. We started talking with the neighborhood about how we were going to meet our stormwater requirements for the Harbach Street reconstruction. When we started, we were under, working with the assumption that we were doing Phase One of Harbach this year, which is now near completion. And then getting into Phase Two, which would be from, I believe, one hundred and fifth street, excuse me, eighty-fifth street over to, eighty-third street over to eighty-sixth. Thank you. Now that timeline is changing. The CIP discussion from this past council meeting and in our workshop, the council directed staff to see if there was a way to do a flip and bring in another street, which now has in turn meant that we are going to push Phase Two of Harbach, if the council continues down this path, Phase Two of Harbach into twenty twenty-five as opposed to twenty twenty-four. That creates a bigger window of time here when we can work on meeting all of these stormwater requirements. Though I think it's really important that we immediately get going on meeting the requirements for the first phase of work that have already been done. In addition to the street reconstruction, we know with the eighty-sixth street neighborhood plan, there are many other improvements that are going to be made, some of which are going to come with stormwater requirements. How do we want to meet those? We've been working sort of with the idea that, similar to with the street reconstruction, we are going to need to use every available inch of green space and private property that's willing and public property that we can to meet those current and also future stormwater requirements. I have a preference in this program to work with residences as much as we can, because I think it creates benefits around building up their stewardship ethic. It makes them feel like their city is redirecting, reinvesting directly in them. I think those are big wins. But I don't think we're going to be able to meet all of our requirements just working with private property owners in the neighborhood. There's also going to be stuff we need to do on our parks and working with some of the bigger commercial properties if they're willing. So more definition to come to this program. But I do think that we'll need to get started still here in the spring of twenty twenty-three. At the very least, with getting our recruiting done, identifying those folks who want to do some of the easiest types of practices, the SQR and the trees. That's where we want to keep things focused. Any questions about sort of our thinking at this point?
You saw a tree sale in twenty-four, can you talk to them about that?
That would be separate from this. The Harbach Partnership Program has always been designed to be, city pays a hundred percent because we need to meet our own requirements. The proposed tree sale program, I think, would be better set up as a cost share, where city was able to make a big bulk purchase, similar to what our friends over in Johnston do. The reason I like the cost share, too, is if we make the big bulk purchase, we're going to be able to compete for a better price for those trees. We're also going to have a little bit of control on the species because there are some that we think are going to do better than others. But it also then requires the property owner to have some skin in the game. We need them to care about this as much as we care about it, and when they pay for it, they care about it a little differently than if they just get it for free. So we can come in and help them plant it and get it done, but then the watering and the steward, the maintenance of it after that, that's what we need them to step up. At least that's my early thinking about what a tree program would look like, but we're still many, many months away from implementing something like that. And there would need to be a budget consideration for all of you to take up before we narrow down on our specifics. Okay. So you'll hear a lot from me and Ray about, and from your constituents about this program as Ray and I go out and engage with them. Natural Resources Team, so this was one of the key tactical next steps that we identified for year one in implementation of the Water Resources Master Plan. This list is almost identical to a list that I put forward back in twenty twenty-one when we were considering this team. The only change here that you see has to do with street trees, which at that time, we didn't know where those were going to live with this team or some other place. The tree moves on public land, would continue to live with this team, but the street trees would be moving over to the Public Works Team to manage. The list there at the top of managing Clive's public resources, the public BMPs, that's not an exhaustive list, but it does give you some of the very biggest ones that take that ongoing annual maintenance. Just like gray infrastructure, gray infrastructure takes regular maintenance. This team will be doing much of that work. They're also, though, very much embedded in the Parks Team. This, when we hire this person, they will come onboard as a Parks Specialist, assuming that the council is still good with that direction. And they will be supporting a number of activities that happen in the Parks Team traditionally, like the snow operations that Parks responsible for, like leading volunteers and interns on natural resource improvements, like tree plantings, invasive species removal, supporting the goat program probably in the future as well. The coordination between me, Ray, Richard, Jeff, Doug, Matt, and everybody else that works within our teams, that's what makes the Natural Resources Team tick. We are hiring people, yes, who would, or one person this year who will specifically be sort of named as a part of that team. But all of us put our time into that type of work. All of us have a responsibility to, for the success of the team.
Could you explain what you said about trees, that street trees are moving?
Yeah.
Explain who's doing what.
So the big trees and like the Green Belt are in the Parks. Those are the Parks Team's responsibility, though I'm sure if we needed help with machinery, Richard, they would be reaching out to Public Works to be able to help out. But the tree, street trees, like the ones that went up along Clark Street, some of those, because I think we're buying some new equipment in the Parks, in the Public Works Team to be able to sort of chip what they cut, they're going to be able to handle some of that type of activity moving forward.
We've had that function move around a little bit in the past. Typically, historically, what it's been for anything in the right of way, including trees, it'd been the Public Works Team responsibility. We had a transition of that when we only had one chipper to the Parks Team for a while because we only had that one chipper. And so one thing that we did in the budget process, and we won't be getting the piece of equipment for a while, is having that secondary chipper as kind of an insurance policy when we have things like DROs or other wind events to be able to have multiple teams that we can send around the city. But with that, that gives us more flexibility and wanted to shift some of the load off of the Parks Team back to Public Works for the, just the right-of-way trees, which was a function that they were normally having when we only had, but we only had one tool at the time. Now we have the two tools, hopefully, once we get the second tool, which is taking a little while because of the kind of equipment purchasing delays. But that, that's part of this transition.
Thank you.
Outcomes we want to achieve with the Natural Resources Team. We want to make sure that we are defining now, this was a key direction, piece of direction we got from the council when we did the Water Resources Master Plan. We need to know what is the status of our assets right now, the public assets first. So coming up with that plan for those inspections and making sure we're solid on that, making sure then we're defining the management strategy for those diverse BMPs. We want to get that established, and Ray has already started working on that in conjunction with partners at Public Works and with Richard and myself. We have some new public BMPs that have come onboard, like the Alice's Road Stormwater Wetlands, about a year and a half old now, but certainly the Rain Guardians and the Bio Retention Cells on Clark, all the assets up at CPSC. We want to make sure we've got a well-defined plan for how we're managing those. We want to make sure that we are, that team is supporting the tree plantings that are going to be done for the Stormwater Partnership Program. Tree planting is something that's such a great thing to do with volunteers that we don't need to pay a contractor to do it. That's how we got the trees planted on Clark Street, that's a more cost-effective way to go. We also want to make sure that as we're getting our hands wrapped around our current public BMPs, that we, there are some that need, and are high-value sort of targets. If we make some improvements now, we're going to get better performance. Let's identify those so we can better now fold them into a CIP process or other workflows that we have. That's that point there about identifying two to three public BMPs for structural improvement in this coming year. Do you see the end of the rest of the list, the bottom one there with the Green Belt goats grazing browsing strategy? We want to keep getting better and better at using those goats from year to year as well.
That's going to take some high-level strategic thinking. You may need to get McCoy to help you out with that.
Yeah, yeah, well, I just hope, you know, we can keep the goats in order. It was about this time last year when Steve decided to go on his Ferris Bueller's Day Off and.
But don't jinx us now.
I didn't say it. All right, another one that's going to be a very, very large lift, specifically because of the vegetation, the trees that are going to be coming down and the detours with the trail. As Waki goes through with their sewer project, especially east of Alice's Road, that is going to be a very large disruption, especially for the houses that are on the north side of the creek. We have to be excellent in our communications with those folks and others. We had to have them manage that change. Now, the date there, November thirtieth, at Schuler Elementary School. After talking about that during our monthly Water Resources Plan meeting yesterday, the team decided that we want to go a little bit early, go, stretch that into twenty twenty-three, the very first part of twenty twenty-three, because we're not pinned down yet with the twenty-eighty agreement with Waki. Waki needs to be a part of this meeting. It's going to be their contractor who's in there doing the sewer work. They're going to need to be able to share some of that detail with all the neighbors. So they've got to have their ducks ready in a row before I think that it's, we should, then we, before we can go confidently to the neighborhood and give them all the information that they need. But this is the first of what will have to be many, many touches over the course of all of twenty twenty-three and coordinated touches with our partners in Urbandale and Waki. The trail closure, as we discussed during the CIP workshop, will be from one hundred and fifty-sixth Street all the way to Alice's Road. That section where one hundred and fifty-sixth Street Trail comes in, that's Urbandale's Trail, and then it hooks up with ours between one hundred and fifty-six and Alice's. Will it, what will be the status of the closure for that entire period of time? There'll probably be some ebb and flow, there'll be some places where the detour needs to change as work gets done. But it's going to be, for the most part, a lot of disruption, and we want to be forthright with the neighborhood about that from the very start. We'll also need to put all of our other assets together to make sure we can update people with those information on the project, whether it's email. We'll also need to put all of our other assets together to make sure we can update people with those information on the project, whether it's email or directing them to a construction page.
Pete, I understand what you're saying about, you know, wanting to have the details with, you know, Waki coming in to do the sewer line replacement and waiting to do that meeting. But any thoughts on sending out kind of initial communications, maybe not a meeting, but, you know, hey, here's an email, here's a flyer or something like that.
So I think that the initial email and letter that we send will be for households that go from Alice's Road. And all of our Northwest neighborhoods to everybody who is going to be anywhere near sort of where our trail picks up. To the east of Alice's Road and over to it as well. We'll probably stretch all the way up to Meredith as well. And we'll have to think about how far south we want to stretch down to, to capture that audience. I'm expecting a big grupo. That's why I want to do this at Schuler Elementary School. When we send that letter, it will be sharing with them not only the information about the meeting, but some of those big headlines for them to expect. That's when we're going to start taking the Band-Aid off, telling them this is going to be a major disruption to a trail that you all use quite frequently, we hope. It also means that there's going to be some vegetation that has to come down as they do this. So we're going to go ahead and communicate that early. We're not hiding the ball on this at all. In fact, I would rather almost tell people the worst case scenario here and then, then, then. Get people feel a little more relieved if it's not quite as disruptive as we know it potentially could be, but accuracy and timeliness is key.
So what, what's the timing on that, on this now, since we're changing the meeting?
Right, so the two thousand and eighty has been in negotiation since September. And we're working diligently, Jeff May representing the city, working closely with the folks in Waki. Christina and her team have done good markup on all of that, and there are more rounds of markup that will need to happen before we get to good. But Waki currently is hopeful. And we'll see if they can stick to this. They're hopeful that it's going to be December, January timeframe, when they're going to be setting their public hearing to then take bids for the project. Originally, we wanted to get started as soon as conditions allowed, right? When it gets cold, that's a good time to do the sewer work. We're not going to be far from that when this ultimately gets started unless there's some massive hiccup in the two thousand and eighty agreement. But I think we're still on track to get started here in the winter time, which means we're on track for those first neighborhood meetings. Potentially into the end of December, middle of December, got to dance around the holidays a little, but certainly I think we're can. Early January, mid-January would work.
One layer of complication to all of this too, that we're just being mindful of as we go through the legal review is that. The goal is ultimately that the sewer and sewers in this area, including potentially some of five sewers. Will eventually go over to the W R A for maintenance and oversight. And so we have to think through. What that means, because the W R A has certain expectations and any sewers that they receive. For maintenance purposes, and that obviously alleviates a maintenance need for us down the road. But then there's just a lot of moving pieces with that, that we're trying to be very cognizant of as. You know, Christina and her team are doing the review and thinking of, okay, what do we need to have incorporated in the Waki agreement? Because eventually it's going to probably get assigned to the W R A. So that gets a little bit more complicated. But again, Clive controls, you know, our, you know, the easement. In this area, and so Waki needs us to sign off on it. And as we've advised Waki, I wouldn't set a public hearing for a word in a contract till you have a two thousand and eighty agreement with us, because you don't have a project unless you have an easement. So those are part of the discussions that we're having. We're hoping things move a little bit faster here. But it's really on Waki to, to meet those, those questions that we have in the twenty.
Yeah, totally, totally get that. We want to make sure our, our questions are answered and our concerns are addressed. But I think, I think it's just, especially with the holidays and all that kind of intermixed, I think having the, maybe even multiple notifications of, of. You know, hey, this meeting's coming up, because we've, we've gotten some feedback previously, like, hey, I got this mailer, you know, two days before the meeting. I can't change my schedule.
Yeah, we don't mail two days before the meetings. We'll give everybody at least two weeks in follow-up then with. Social media and digital communications. The first meeting is where we typically start to get that email list just generated. Though we can also capture email addresses from folks who just visit our website.
And it's a balance, right? Because, you know, you get folks that say, oh, well, you told me two weeks ago, I forgot.
Yep.
Then you get other folks that say, oh, you only told me two days before, so.
Well, it's.
Just that multiple touch points, right?
It is, it is, and, and it's keep the spigot open. It's. Yeah, it can be frustrating when people say, you didn't tell me about this. Well, I don't fault people for being really, really busy with other parts of their lives. They have other things that are going on. This is not something, their built environment is not something that they're thinking about, except that they're. Expecting that it's going to be there, just as they've always experienced it. We are coming in and changing things. So that's on us. That's on our, an onus on us to be able to then. Meet them where they're at.
Sounds good. Yeah, especially with the holidays. It makes it even tougher. So.
I prefer to push into January, don't, we don't have to dance around the holidays. And also that gives us a chance to push it through the January newsletter. Which is one of our biggest communications tools.
Speaking of social media, can we try or have we tried geofencing? That message gets so broad, right? And if we can geofence it to that neighborhood, to that.
Yeah.
Affected group, right? Then it's concentrated right there. We can even do some boost or pay for some of that, but you know, the, my area doesn't really need to know. So, so much detail that you're going to be flooding this group with.
I just don't, if, if we haven't tried, it's kind of a cool tool. I agree, but we don't want to cast too narrow of a net either and, and do just like. This subdivision and that's it, right? So it's a little bit of a balance on it. Yeah.
You could roughly do everything north of Douglas.
Yep.
And all the neighborhoods north of Douglas and in Clive, you could capture a pretty good net.
Doesn't mean you're not still communicating the other way. Everybody, the, the water bill, the.
Yep. We can definitely do, look what our options are on that one. Stormwater irrigation rate changes. Matt and Liz gave everybody a little bit of an update over the previous meetings on the irrigation. Changes that we're considering. Here is a reiteration of what you've seen already from the Water Resources Master Plan for plans for the stormwater. The breakdown of households is what I want to draw your attention to especially. Most folks are going to see what was been a pretty normal increase consistent with what we've done in the past, moving up from where we're at today. Up to eleven fifteen per month. Folks though, who are in the large group there of seven hundred and fifty households, they're going to feel something a little, quite a bit different. There may be some pain associated with that, but I think that the logic that you have all articulated in the plan is sound. If you use the resource more than others, then you should pay for that use. It's not exactly like using more gallons of water. We don't measure your stormwater the same way. And it varies obviously from year to year, depending on how much stormwater happens to fall. But over time, I think we can confidently say that when you have more impervious surface that you're on your roof, your driveway, whatever the case may be. You are ultimately going to be stressing out the larger stormwater conveyance system more or using that system more than somebody who has less impervious surface. So that's the core of our logic. The one, the primary ways we're going to talk about this with the neighborhood, if this is still the council's direction, will be. In the spring, we'll create a video similar to what we did with the lost video, an animation. It'll be a pairing both the irrigation rate change with the stormwater rate change. We'll have a landing page that everybody goes to for that as well. It'll be built out of cityofclive.com, and then we'll also be sharing it across digital platforms and all of our print platforms as well. So folks aren't surprised when they get their first utility bills and they start to see some changes from what they'd seen in the past year. Most of this activity, all the prep of it before it is going to be kicking off really January, February, March. And then March, April, May. May is key because that's when the new rates are going to, folks are going to see those on those first May utility bills. I think I'm right on that, Liz. Is that correct? Yeah.
So within our newsletter, I'm assuming not only we're going to have this in there, but I would hope we'd have it multiple times.
Absolutely.
Reminders, not just once.
Yep. I want to make sure that we go through the budget process and that it's all minted in March, so that everybody knows at that point, okay? They had a chance to come and voice their concerns if they had them, but staff is moving forward on this as if the policy direction has been given from the council. So when we are communicating with the neighbors at that point, it's not to ask for them to come and amend the policy. It is to tell them that this is the decision that has been made by the council.
As the council recall, typically our processes and for the budget processes, you approve your budget that second meeting in March, and that's usually the first reading. Of the utility ordinance changes, and so then you'd have the two meetings in April. As well for the second and third reading of the order of the rate changes. And then it gets implemented in May for June bills for receipt in July. That's kind of how the timing works.
First bill that you could see this on would be June.
Yeah. It would be applied to the May usage for, for the June bill payable.
That's really only two newsletters, then April and May go out.
Yeah.
I guess you could do it in June too, just as a.
Great. Oh, yeah, you definitely would do it. Yeah, yeah. You could, you could hit it May, June, July.
Yeah, okay.
Especially as you get into the heavier irrigation months.
Right.
When we talk about the irrigation rate changes, we're going to want to do more than just talk about the rates during those months. The water conservation reminders, once we land on that final, you know, Liz and I are working on kind of based on your feedback, what that. Tier irrigation rate structure could look like and bring that back to you in January with the, with the cash flows. We'll want to do, continue to do water conservation education related to irrigation and stormwater all at the same time. And that's where it made a lot of sense to pair these together, kind of a water resources education component, because they kind of feed off each other in different ways.
Yeah, I agree with what you said here, the early and often touches. People don't like surprises. They're going to get some surprises.
Yep. When you look at your utility bill, your stormwater number is your small number. And these, even for those folks who are in that seven hundred and fifty households or more that are going up to seventeen eighty-four. That's still going to look like a relatively small number, but as a percentage increase, it's significant for these folks to see this. So I would expect that we're going to need to do quite a bit of educating and explaining for folks. The variable one is going to be that irrigation. So I think. I, I would anticipate just because it's going to be so, so much more money that we're talking about, and because it will be variable, depending on the activity that they choose to take on. How much they decide the water, that's going to be one where we'll probably hear quite a bit more, but it's an important step.
Or if you're doing S Q R.
Or if they're doing S, that's right, there's going to be some cost associated. Okay, now I'm going to turn it over to Ray to talk a little bit about what we're going to be doing from an inspection strategy in this coming year.
I'm sure, Pete, you were doing such a great job. All right, so part of our M S four permit is the post-construction stormwater management, in particular. The inspection of our best management practices, which satisfies the requirement that we have an inspection of all runoff devices and a watershed assessment program. In previous years, council had asked our water resources engineer where the city could make improvements with regards to the M S four. And at that time, the biggest deficiency discussed was the lack of inspection and maintenance on the city's post-construction B M Ps. Since that conversation, my understanding is that we've reviewed hundreds of site plans and filled out our inventory, thank you, Rachel Conrad. To a current total of two hundred and eighty-four components. This number will continue to increase as more sites perform construction activities that require adherence to our stormwater ordinance. Of these two hundred and eighty-four practices. Two hundred and forty-seven are privately owned and thirty-seven are owned by the City of Clive. Not a mistake number, twenty-eight of the thirty-seven Clive owns have been inspected. The gap there is new. Practices that have just come online recently, so we haven't had an inspection cycle since we've added them. And twenty-eight of the two hundred and forty-seven privately owned. Right now, we employ a pass fail system in six categories, debris, erosion, vegetation, structure, sediment, and a catch-all other. So that composes our high-level overview and the, having that data set and continuing to augment that data set on an annual basis. Helps us inspect all of the above-ground components every five years as required by permit. This slide encompasses the high-level overview that helps us inspect, sorry, repeating myself, just kidding. So this slide covers how the sort of inspection breaks down our primary inspection up on the top. That blue is that stuff that is happening every year. So ongoing in the background, every year we'll continue to have these pass fail inspections. And these primary inspections help us identify immediate maintenance for the coming year. So we inspect them in the winter. We notice that things need fixing. If it's emergent, we fix it immediately. Sometimes it's not emergent and we put it on our radar to. Put it on the list for maintenance. A few practices each year, this is the middle bar, the detailed inspection. A few practices each year need to be designated for a detailed inspection. So this is more than just is there sediment at the structure, is there vegetation at the outfall? And typically those detailed inspections are going to be with failures in our major category. Or a sufficient number of miners that we need to look at it more closely. The last piece is the special maintenance and projects. These only come online if they, obviously safety first. So if there's a hotspot in the watershed that we need to be touching and it's a safety concern, we get to put our attention there. And then council has already expressed that we'd like to be doing public, public maintenance and public improvements before private. So that we understand what we're asking our private B M P owners to do, like do first and then ask others to do in line with us. There's further prioritization underneath what would go into a special maintenance item or project. And all of that just gets, it goes through a calculus and it comes down to public before private, and then does it make sense in the watershed? Do we already have attention there? Do we already have equipment there? Can we get, does the, do the volumes make sense? Does it make sense to do the work on the B M P? So the last piece is changes to our M S four permit. So I get to write a report. It's due the thirty-first of December. Our current M S four is good from two thousand and nineteen through two thousand and twenty-four. We need to file for renewal at the beginning of two thousand and twenty-four. I think the only interesting, exciting thing about the slides, unless you really like dates, is that our current permitter. Well, the current permit writer has retired, and so our new permit will be written by somebody. And we don't know if it's going to be a copy paste. We don't know if there are going to be significant changes. But we already have relations and communications in place that if we don't understand any of the changes, we can ask and get further clarification. So yeah, that's the most exciting thing here. Any questions?
Go back to public works as private, one slide back.
Yeah.
Public before private, that's on the maintenance. Is that on the inspections as well?
We have begun private inspections. Part of it is so that, because there's so many of them. We just have to start them sooner before we can ask private B M P holders to do any work. So in the same way that we came to all of our public B M Ps and said, we need to understand what we have before we prioritize the work we do. Similarly, we need to take a look at the private B M Ps that are within the city, get a good understanding of what is out there. Before we start identifying where we need to focus and ask for changes. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. I mean, getting into weeds I don't want to do, but if you're out there in the private and you're looking or assessing them. And we see something, let's, let's enforce it right then instead of saying. Yeah, here's a private, here's a private, here's a private, getting all the numbers going around all of them, and then coming back and saying, okay, this is what we have. Now let's go inspect. We were just there. Now we're touching them twice.
I don't think it has to be all two hundred and forty-seven private inspected before we ever ask somebody to bring their. And their B M P into compliance, but being able to understand how heavy is the lift and have we done similar work needs to happen before we ask a private owner to do the same.
That's where I, I don't know if that's the, the whole direction of the council. That's where I part ways if it is. It's an agreement we had with the property owner originally. They know it's on that agreement. We enforce it. Now, whether we give them some time or some efforts or creativity to do it. I don't think we should say it's such a big deal. We're going to back off and allow or have us do our twenty-seven before we ask you to do your thirty-seven. I see we hit them with it and be kind and walk them through it, right? Not punitive and, and iron-fisted, but. We got to start somewhere, and I'm just saying, let's start enforcing it now.
Agreed. So on the point where we can ask. I think there are, I think the last piece that you said, the part where there are opportunities to improve the B M Ps is where you get to go with this. Because on the one hand, you could ask them to come in compliance per the documents from nineteen eighty-four. And then they'd have something that was in compliance with something that is, they'd have a B M P that is in compliance with not our stormwater ordinance. So if there are opportunities, I'd prefer to take a closer look and see, is there an opportunity to not only bring this into compliance? Per whatever grandfathered status you have, I'd prefer to bring it into compliance with what we have today. And yeah, agreed that that's an opportunity for partnership and that we can ask people to come in compliance sooner. And we don't have to perfectly fix all twenty-seven of our practices first in order to do that.
One other point there, it's that last one about being in line with the strategic plan. There are parts of the city where we have a lot cooking right now. There are parts of the city where we have a lot cooking right now, northwest neighborhoods, eighty-sixth street neighborhoods. There are some places where you all have given us direction, saying, we're going to dedicate a ton of time here, let's get this right. And so those are some of the places that we intend to be already very active through our engagement or through a partnership program like the harbor stormwater partnership program. Those are the places we think it would make sense then also to look at those private BMPs and work on bringing them into a better state, whether that's compliance with what their previous sort of requirement was, or even better, an even elevated standard that's more consistent with the rules we have in place today. I'm with you though, Councilman, I mean, I thought, like, we're out there, let's touch all of them, but there's going to have to be some prioritization that we bring to it on an annual basis, because there are just so many of them that we're trying to get our arms around.
I think even if they see a random approach, right, uh, kind of our rental deal or whatever have you, and they don't know if they're being inspected, that's even better than just kind of announcing that we're going to be hands-off for the next five, ten years until we get our in-house done. It just kind of gives them a free go here.
I think the only correction there is that we're, we're not waiting until all the in-house ones are done before we go, before we pursue opportunities with private BMPs.
More to come, devil's in the detail, right?
It is, it is, and the other one that I'll put out there that we've had every single year, I'm sure every year you both can think of the one, that hotspot issue that comes up, where a councilperson is contacted by a constituent saying, I've got this idea, I've got this problem, I need your help. And then that's going to focus our attention as part of what, how you all engage with staff as well, and we're going to need to be responsive to that. Okay. Thank you, Ray.
Thanks, Pete, thank you.
Building on that, we're here at our last slide. So two of the highest-profile things that we're going to be doing in this coming year, potentially. Soil quality restoration cost share two point oh. How big can we go? Depends on how much funding we're going to be able to put against this. The funding source that it seems to make the most sense to me at this point, but would take to clear direction from all of you would be revenues that would come from more likely than not, uh, either the stormwater utility or the water, the water utility because of increased revenue from the change in the irrigation rate. But we're going to need to discuss that more and make sure that we map out with PFM and others what the actual financial situation is going to look like. The good news, though, is that we have a pretty good sense for how far we can go, depending on what the cost of compost and aeration installed is. We were twenty-one cents a square foot for the program we did this past year, I would expect a higher number next year. But now we've got the met math in place, it's a pretty simple formula. We can see how many square feet we're going to be able to do, and based on that, and then the average size of the participating households, we'll be able to figure out how many households we can handle.
So Pete, as part of that analysis, um, that you provide to us, um, yeah, can you make sure that, you know, this is, it's a zero-sum game, right? So if we're taking money out of stormwater and irrigation to go towards this, then it's not going towards something else, right? So what I would like to know is what is that something else that we're not going towards at whatever different levels we're talking about?
That opportunity cost. I would be, I think it will be, since we're not going to have as many hands to execute a program like this, I think it's unreasonable to think we can do anything like the scale we did this last year. I think it would be heroic if we were to be able to get to fifty. The amount of revenue that I think we'll create with these changes to the stormwater and the irrigation, or then the water, uh, utilities will be greater than what would, it would take to do, let's say, thirty, forty SQRs, even if we got a very different number with the compost installed. So I feel like we're in pretty good shape there, that we wouldn't use up all of the new revenue, but there would still be an opportunity cost.
Right.
This next one, though, about the standalone Clive Water Resources Grant Program. So we talked about this during the Water Resources Master Planning Process, and we didn't reach a perfect sort of summary of where we wanted to be. There was some disagreements still that we knew we were going to need to, disagreement's not the right word, there were still some questions we needed to answer, some questions about just the logic of starting with the carrot before you bring the stick. Some of the, some of the questions that Councilman McCoy just brought up as well, so those questions are still here in front of us. The good news, though, is that when we minted that plan, it also included a standing-up of the grant program, starting with a very modest ten thousand dollars for this coming fiscal year. That would be sort of on the ground, starting to recruit projects probably this spring and summer, implement the projects over the summer and fall for reimbursement and the fall at the beginning of the next fiscal year. Since then, we've also learned a lot through the SQR program about what to take to get interest. Every community that we talked to about their water resources grant program equivalent was they have a hard time spending all the money. Part of that, I think, is just because of the way that most of them are structured, it's a reimbursement. A batch system where you keep it simple, you work with a great hook, we're going to make your yard more beautiful and it's going to do better at catching water and you're going to have fewer inputs. That's a great hook, SQR works, it's a great hook. Telling people that you, here's the laundry list of all the things you could do with your water resources approach on your yard. Do a rain garden, you could do a rain barrel, you could do native plantings, all these things. It's just a more difficult story to tell and to get people excited about it. Plus, when they feel like they're the ones who have to put all the money in first and then get reimbursed, it's just one more hurdle that you have to get over. Because of that learning that we've done in the SQR program, my own instinct is to go toward more of these batched approaches with one practice in mind. Let's do a build-your-own-rain-barrel and let's get fifty rain barrels out across the city. Let's do the new SQR program and let's get thirty, forty more SQRs done. If we're going to keep the grant program sort of as we envisioned, it would still be a nice pot of money and it could potentially be a place where we make even larger financial awards for very large projects. So think about the ponds that are privately owned in Clive, think about some of the areas where we have, um, maybe even a property owner like, like, uh, some who have a, a part of Walnut Creek Stream Bank that they're concerned about, they want to stabilize it, sort of on us to come alongside, but maybe they like Jeff Carter, want to move more, uh, quickly and put some of their own money into it as well. A grant program like this could help us tackle some of those higher-dollar type projects that the homeowners associations bring to us, or maybe even large commercial properties bring to us as well. So I put it before you all tonight still as an open question and appreciate direction and doesn't need to be finalized tonight, we still got some time to figure out the program. If you choose not to go with this program that's looking at larger type of asks, then we already are set up to set up one that would be more the traditional à la carte program, where folks come with, come to us with everything from, I have a rain barrel I'd like to put in and it's going to cost me five hundred bucks, give me two fifty, to, I've got a four-bay that I want to put on our pond, so it's not so expensive to dig sediment out of it, it's going to cost me a hundred thousand dollars to do it. Can you come alongside with some amount of grant funding?
Well, I think it may be a blend at the front end here, where maybe we do some à la carte stuff on, on stuff that maybe we're not ready to go all in yet, but I, I don't think there's any question, certainly not in my mind, that the, the way that we structured the SQR with the batch purchase, um, i- i- is the reason why it was successful. If, if you're requiring the resident to go out, find their own contractor, pay upfront, and then ask for reimbursement, they're taking all the risk, they're paying more in all likelihood. Um, and, and it's just more complicated and we, we would have had a fraction of the numbers that we had with SQR. So I think on the programs that we, we want to be, whether we want to pilot it or we want to be really serious about, those are the ones that we start with that batch program and then you have the à la carte bill.
But Ted, to your point, I do think it's important that we do a little bit of à la carte, just because it's a way for us to experiment too and see, what do we want to do for the next batch that, you know, homeowner comes to us and says, hey, this worked great on my lawn or, that didn't work out so great, so maybe don't do that one.
Right.
But we also have the experience of a lot of other communities to learn from, we don't just have to do it ourselves. Many of the metro communities have been ahead of us on doing these BMPs. I'd like to go back to where we were a year ago in hearing that our best outcomes for money invested were recommended to be the soil quality restoration and the tree planting. I think I heard you say postponing the tree planting to twenty twenty-four before we get into that, but I'm kind of interested in hearing about that. I want the whole thing to be characterized in the context of what gives us the biggest benefit.
Yep.
Cost-benefit ratio, basically, so I want to hear about it in that context.
Practices in the ground, yeah.
Certainly with, with the kind of money we're talking about, it's not, it's not a big pool of money, what did we say, ten thousand dollars right there? But this is a learning program for all of us, you know, it's a start, and Susan and I, we've had this conversation, it's, it's better than nothing. We start, we learn from it, we, we understand that other communities have successfully implemented programs like this, let's learn their lessons there and continue, uh, you know, a combination of à la carte and, and batch programs as we continue to move this forward, you know? But the whole point is, let's move it forward.
I think that in twenty twenty-three, we can look back at, uh, from what we get there, we'll look back at twenty twenty-two and say, we knew we wanted to move fast, we've really started moving fast in twenty twenty-two. It was a lot of fun and we got a lot of practices in the ground and we changed a lot of hearts and minds.
You know, and, and with this on the trees, I don't necessarily want to wait till twenty-four, you know, we could figure out small things and, uh,
Okay.
you know, that's, that's a great way to, uh, it, it solves, we all love trees, right? So it does a lot of different things, so.
No doubt.
Figure out some kind of batch program with the trees in twenty-three.
Okay, that's good direction. Um, we'll talk about potential funding sources for all that and whether it makes sense from a timing standpoint to do those, it'd have to be fall twenty twenty-three. I don't think we'd be able to get everything ready to go for spring twenty-three for tree planting.
Most of them are in the fall anyway.
Yep, most of those would be in the fall, so we'll need to talk a little bit about funding opportunities. Um, it may be something where some of that would need to come from this ten thousand dollars that is loosely sort of organized as a grant-type program, but those would be grants that we make as cost shares for the cost of these trees. I'll just need to confirm that we can actually source all of those before we, uh, commit to doing a, a, a program like that.
What size trees are you?
I'm going to defer to my expert here on bright-sized tree.
You'd probably want to find a balance of a tree that's big enough that would survive a lot easier, but one that's not too big that they couldn't haul home in their vehicle. So probably neighborhood of a one-inch caliber tree, so a tree that's probably about that by around is probably the best. You get a pretty big tree for a really decent price as well, if you're buying in bulk like Pete was talking about.
And if we needed to put together teams that could come out once you got the tree to your house, or if you were somebody who didn't have the means to do it, if we could put together our silver cord hours for all of those kids, what a great thing for all of our friends in high school and the middle schools to do. Come out, help us with the planting program, and while we're doing it the same way we did with the SQR, tell them about all the good, tell them about all the reasons that this matters. Convert them, if they aren't already converted, to being people who care about water stewardship the way that all of us do. That's good direction, I appreciate that, we'll get started on working up what a tree program could look like for twenty twenty-three and also what some, with the dollars we have, what the à la carte style look could be, so we can put that out on the street for folks who are ready to go.
Very good, thanks, Pete. Move on to the legislative priorities.
And we'll be able to, I think, cover these relatively quickly, I'm going to dress jacket over. So our legislative priorities were in your packet, they are largely verbatim for what we had in past years. There are a couple of things, though, that we have added. Point number three there under number two, specifically telling that if there is intention to address property taxes in Clive or any other large revenue source for the cities, there should be responsible engagement with city councils and city staff before that. No surprises. Any questions about that?
Good luck.
I know, it was our, 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 yeah, it's, uh, it comes down to how well, that's right, that's right. We can, but it's worth calling it out and also stating our receptiveness to it. We're happy to be part of, if they want to change up the solution, the, the game here, we're not going to tell them that they can't, it's, they're prerogative to do it, but let's do it in a way that respects the input that all of you have to offer as well. On point number three, about water resources excellence, that builds on many of the things that we've talked about in past years. One of the new ones, though, that, uh, we've added here would be point number E, excuse me, point number F, about DNR securing, uh, a pro- program to help cities deal with PFAS chemicals, especially firefighting foams. That's something our fire department is working on quite a bit. And then the final one about a more streamlined permitting process that better aligns with what we have to do at the federal level when we're working in stream banks.
I'm interested in F, um, what would you, what, what's your ask? It's a dangerous ask in my eyes, but what, what's our ask for?
What, uh, what we found out of the last few years is the EPA has determined that, uh, this PFAS chemical, it's in a lot of things, but particularly in firefighting foam, is very, very, uh, dangerous to people, uh, and very, very dangerous to the environment. They call it a, uh, forever chemical and so all these fire departments were sitting around with this foam and, and no way to dispose of it. And, you know, there's eight hundred and thirty-three fire departments in Iowa. And what's going to happen is if they don't get a way to secure it, people are going to train with it, they're going to dump it out. Um, that, that's just the reality of it, so we've had some meetings, one meeting with the DNR, just sharing, um, our concern and our desire to try to get some funding. A number of states have done take-back programs where, um, the, the DNR-type agencies will collect this and store it simply to protect the environment more than anything. Uh, but right now, the DNR doesn't have any money, uh, they're very, they're very interested, but they're also very cautious because, um, the more and more they learn about the PFAS, uh, chemical, uh, the more they're not sure that they want to control that. So it's a big unknown, it's going to be a very expensive thing, uh, for city, state and, and, um, the government, the, um, the airport fire chief said that the airport has gotten rid of foam and it costs them twenty thousand dollars a gallon to get rid of. So it's a big deal for everybody and, uh, we're trying to get it on the DNR's radar. And the, really the next step is we're, um, we're working with, uh, emergency management to figure out exactly how much foam we have so that we know exactly the, the extent of the problem we're working with, but it's going to be a big deal.
And that's in a powder form, right, that we mix with water, is it?
No, it's a, it's like a liquid gel and simply makes a whole bunch of bubble bath, this is what it looks like.
Right.
We've used it for years, unfortunately, they're finding it very, very cancerous and, um, uh, very, very toxic.
Two things, can you give, but, give the stuff we got back to whoever donated it to us, to the oil company or whoever that is down the street on eighty-six and just leave it there and say thank you and, uh, we didn't need it?
Uh, no, there was a very, very narrow window three or four years ago where, because they were coming out with new foams that didn't have this in it. There was a narrow window where these companies would have taken back what you had in order to sell you the new stuff. Uh, but, um, nobody knew enough then to have the, the funding or to find the funding, uh, to take advantage of it.
It's a big issue and it's bigger than fire departments, uh, times a hundred when it comes to the landfills, because the DNR and the EPA are looking to regulate that as well with every PFAS coming into your facility. And it's a, it's a slippery slope to open that door legislatively. Um, when it comes to the EPA wants to regulate it, but they have no regulation, they have no enforcement mechanism, uh, and they have no solution to PFAS, right? So on, on, as a city that owns a, two landfills and such, I, I would say caution, because you open that door and it's going to be regulated on the landfills that, that has no solution. Uh, the EPA, the DNR, nobody has a solution for PFAS, like you said, it's a forever chemical, forever plastic. Uh, it, well, the simple numbers are billions of dollars even for the state of Iowa landfills, which would bankrupt every one of them if it had to be regulated. So it's balancing act of, and I, and we get it, I get it, I mean, it's a terrible chemical or terrible, terrible byproduct.
Do I hear then direction that this is one we want to pause on or is this something that we're comfortable or reverting?
I, I think if you do it very narrowly for the fire departments of a, of securing a way to store it, right? Makes sense.
Does it take legislation or is it working directly with the DNR? I know you said you're trying to get their attention.
They're broke.
We're asking for funding.
It was.
It's a funding focus.
DNR is literally broke because of the legislators, right?
They are.
So I think it's forcing the legislators to give a funding pot. Two, this is where I say very narrowly to the fires, you know, fire departments. It does open the door, though. It does open the door though, for the landfill associations and the recycling associations to slip in and say, what about us? Um, how are you gonna fund billions of dollars for PFAS going through the leachate and the water systems that we take? WRA is also looking at this as a major hurdle. The good thing is it's on the radar. Another good thing is there is no solution. So the EPA can't enforce it. There's just, you can't get rid of the material.
Unless you can find some way, and this is also actively being researched now, to cost effectively break them up.
To do what?
To break them apart, to break apart those, to unwind those chemicals to
Right.
middle, molecularly, yes.
Yeah. And that hasn't been, yeah, found yet.
What a joke on my own tongue if I try and say that word again. Okay.
Yeah, I'm not saying stop it. I think that everyone needs to work together. This is a giant issue that this is what we've heard because we've asked fire departments to put it into the landfill, which is lined and could handle it. But then we have a byproduct of water that we have to get rid of that we then take to WRA. Now it's their problem.
Yep.
You own WRA. It's your problem, right?
Goes down the river.
Keeps going to the cities and
Yep.
Back to us. So it's a, just a very
It's, it's a challenge.
Itchy one.
This, the state, my concern is that the state doesn't figure out some kind of program for this. You know, we're obviously a big fire department. What happens to the smaller fire departments out in rural Iowa who doesn't know what they have and just gets rid of it, however they get rid of it?
Or they know what they have and they get rid of it.
Yeah, it, that's the concern is we don't have an answer or at least a storage answer at some point. I'm worried about what may ultimately happen for our waterways.
Yep. The last new one is item number, uh, A, under five. So five is our, historically been our catchall for anything related to home rule and the frequent incursions on home rule. But the one that we are hearing is likely to come again from the gov, the governor's office and from the caucuses, the leadership caucuses is related to a state building code. And would that preempt then local building codes? This got headed off after quite a lot of debate at the committee level. I don't believe it ever made it as a, uh, bill down to the floor for any kind of voting action, but I would expect that it's gonna come back at us in this coming legislative session. The concept of a statewide building code isn't by itself necessarily a bad thing. In fact, it could help us in some interesting ways. One that Doug has identified uh, is that in some of the ways that we're scored on our FEMA grant applications, we'd score better if Iowa had a statewide building code. The trouble comes if that state building code then preempts all other building codes, our building codes here in Clive. The standard that the state was proposing to establish last year would have been multiple generations behind this building codes that we have adopted here in Clive, that all of you have adopted here in Clive. We think that's an overreach. We think that those decisions are best made here at the local level and consistent and, and consistent with the principle of home rule. We don't know the final shape that it's going to take, but we want to make sure that even if they do establish a statewide code in general, it's not going to prevent us from going where you all deem it's appropriate for Clive to be at when it comes to safe building codes, building good neighborhoods and good housing.
I guess my reaction is I'm really, really nervous about a statement telling the legislature to adopt a state billing code. I mean, I guess I would think in terms of if the state adopts a building code, that code should not preempt. I don't know what others think. I mean, that's man.
I, I like that too.
Okay.
We'll make this a flexibility. Code in our list of number five. Make decisions at local levels such as fireworks control, building codes, right? You could add it to that list and not necessarily have the adopt focus, but it's the don't preempt our building codes kind of focus.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fireworks.
I do have a few things.
Susan.
So I have a couple of specific things, but I'd like to look at kind of an overarching question. And I realize this is a document primarily to guide discussion with our four legislators. And it's good to have things that we highlight there that are important to Clive. But I was looking at what we have compared to what the Iowa League of Cities is doing. And they list what they call legislative values that are just kind of basics. And I think it could be worthwhile to reiterate that at the beginning and say, we're in agreement with what the Iowa League of City says about local control, financial stability, economic development, infrastructure and public safety. And a lot of what they're talking about here is built in to what we're asking for. So maybe if we could do that and then call out some of the specifics that we wanted to ask for, like here's where we are on Iowa or here's where we are on a state building code. It might get a little bit more attention and be something that our legislators could run with a little bit more easily and understand. We're in tandem with cities as a whole on some of it. It's just a question, but I think it's worth taking a look at it. And then just a couple of specifics under number one, it's MFPRSI, which is Municipal Fire and Police Retirement System of Iowa. So just correcting that acronym would be good. And then I think maybe we've referred to impact fees here before. But I would really just like to suggest taking that out. I don't think it's worthwhile to ask for a study of it. There are plenty of other states that have it. So we could show them, here's what the benefits are with that. They're having to do a study and, um,
Which one was that?
That one is
Two, two?
Yeah. Where it says research opportunities to utilize impact fees for development costs. Even back when I was lobbying on behalf of the League of Cities, this was a big issue because of a court decision that basically said, we can't collect any impact fees in the state unless the legislature writes into the code that we can't. So we're basically asking them to study doing that. But there was no way that they wanted to look at doing that. And I just can't even imagine that they want to go and write in a new tax because that's what the legislature called it. They said it's a tax. And I'm sorry, it's what the courts called it was a tax. And I, I just don't see that going anywhere.
So would you just want to get rid of the second sentence?
Yeah. I, I don't think we need to ask them to research it. We can show them the, the pros and cons if we want them to look at that. But it's, it's, I, I guess I don't really care, but I, I'd like to be asking for things that we know they're looking to do and might hurt us and got, provide some guidance or help us and provide some guidance. And otherwise things we really want and expect could get some attention and should maybe in collaboration with other cities. That's why I wanted to see what the league was saying.
Yeah.
Cause I think we get further.
Yep. So part of this document is as kind of concise as it is because we try and keep it real direct for the time we have with the legislators when we meet with them before the meetings. So referencing that we partner well with the League of Cities is something that frequently comes up in our discussions with those legislators. Uh, we can add some language to it. I would guy, I would, uh, recommend that the council still keep this pretty concise. I'd pre, like it was last year. I'd really like to just put it on one side of a piece of paper.
Yeah.
So people can take it.
Show those values which are really short. I mean, it's, this is it.
Yeah.
Right here. There's almost nothing to it. Then we end up with about five bullets that we're asking for that don't already correlate. It, it shortens ours down a lot. Is a lot of what we have built in there says the same thing that they do.
Yep. Can see how those things can be meshed together. Any other changes? All right. We'll like, we'll work up a new draft and then bring it for consideration at the December meeting.
And Pete, what's our timetable for meeting with the legislators?
We typically meet with them in December or very first part of January before the session. Yeah, that'll be a meeting. Typically it's a meeting mayor that we do that you and me.
And occasionally the mayor pro tem.
And occasionally mayor pro tem.
Available.
It'll be available. Well, maybe this would be a good segue to, uh, last night's meeting of my log, which is a metro mayors. We did meet with, uh, metro legislators. And many of the items that, uh, are listed here were mentioned by other mayors in the, in the metro. So they have similar concerns to what, uh, what we have. And our mayor pro Tim was there as well. I don't know if you elaborated some of the things that you heard. That was, that was, they were near most of these. And so that helps a lot. Um, you know, fireworks was a major discussion last night. What was interesting is the legislators had an, two, two or three opportunities to, uh, to spell out what they were going to be pushing. And not one of them spoke, uh, on it, but it was well attended.
Yeah.
By, uh, state senators and reps. So, yeah.
Good. Our, uh, delegation is set. Elections were clear and, uh, we'll be reaching out to all the candidates who want, who ran, thanking them for taking a crack at it. And certainly the ones who won and getting those meetings scheduled for the December, January timeframe.
Very good.
Very good. Thank you. Matthew, we could take, I could take that down.
Next on the agenda, we have reports. Pete.
Thank you to everybody who made it in for pictures tonight. Chris McHary did a nice job. I hope you all had some fun. We're gonna get the draft pictures tomorrow. And he'll be touching those up as well, cropping, getting everything looking good and consistent. And once we've got stuff that you're all happy with, we'll replace your existing headshots on the website. Replace them with these new ones. So we've got some consistency and probably add that, one of the best group shots up there as well and add one to the wall.
We'll have weavers in a week or two.
Couple more.
I already mentioned moving the date for the Northwest Neighborhoods meeting. That one is really important to get set. So we'll stay close to all of you as we kind of work on dates.
Is that one where you want some council representation there or you prefer not? Cause it's sometimes we have them where you want some of us there and sometimes not.
I always welcome that. Um, I mean, we're putting a lot of resources to bringing your constituents together. If you want to get a touch with your constituents, obviously I, we're not gonna stand in the way, but so it's your discretion on how you'd like to participate there. But it's gonna be a well attended meeting. The, uh, filming that we got done today, thank you, Councilman McLean eighty, thank you Councilman Weaver for some time as we got that filming done. Sorry, uh, Councilman Clyde, we weren't able to get you fit in this afternoon, but if you haven't sent me your availability to sit down for just 15, 20 minutes in the library to get that filming done. It's not gonna take but just a second. That way I can start putting this all together. So I can start working on that project. Finally, the Lions Basket Program is, uh, to its, I want, I think it's 30th year now. It's a significant anniversary year. Uh, I don't remember the exact year. I do know though, that we're gonna try and get to 85 families this year and that the date we'll be going out to deliver the baskets will be on 12, 10, meeting at the church at nine o'clock. Between now and then you can pick up some items that for, uh, uh, from the gift trees either at Lifetime, the library or Mercy Health and Wellness.
Anything else?
Just recap. Uh, no update other than, uh, you do have to tell Pete which side is your good side when you do the videos. So.
Keep that in mind. Ed, all right. Uh, Water Trails, hopefully everyone saw the announcement. Um, the Scott Avenue phase. Um, we did get a bid back. So the Scott Avenue phase is the in, in water recreational component with the dam mitigation. Um, the engineer's estimate for that, uh, phase was 43 million. It came in at 40.9. So worked out great. That was just passed at the MPO, uh, exec, uh, yesterday, or, you know, yesterday. Um, and so that is moving forward. And so we had that November 1st, uh, letting and, um, we were, you know, kind of on pins and needles for that, but it came back good. So it's moving forward. Um,
Anything else at the MPO?
So MPO, um, I, I mentioned this previously, um, that we had a spirited, uh, debate about the role of the MPO and, and kind of the metro and some, what some would consider scope creep of the MPO's role. Um, we had been brought forth a, a contract from Story County Housing Trust to, for the MPO to, um, manage the contract basically, um, and kind of be the back office, if you will, for, for this, this trust, um, organization. Um, so some of us had some objections to that because, um, housing is not really the primary function of the MPO. And beyond that, uh, the, uh, story county is not in the MPO's jurisdiction. So we were supporting, um, you know, an area that's not even part of the MPO and, um, lots of good arguments and reasons for why to support it. Um, but there were, um, there, there was a lot of debate about, uh, whether we, we should or not. That still has not been resolved. Um, uh, just so you know, I voted against it, um, uh, for the short term until we have our strategic planning. So we're gonna be having a strategic, strategic planning session, uh, in, uh, mid-December, um, to kind of flesh out, here is the specific uh, function and mission of the MPO. And if that, if at that meeting, the full MPO decides that this should be part of our mission, then I will support it. But, uh, I did not, uh, support it at this point because it, it's additional office space. It's additional employees. Um, there, these things always tend to grow organically. And so, um, you know, my concern is with some scope creep and, and it's impacted to the, the operations of the MPO itself and, um, distracting it from transportation. And so, um, so that was, that was kind of my, my feedback to the group, um, along with a few others as well. So we'll see what happens with strategic planning. Like I said, that's gonna be in about a month. Um, and, uh, we'll see how it moves forward, but there was definitely some, some strong opinions about it.
Is the intention for revenue, uh, additional revenue?
Yeah, that's part of it. It's, it's kind of, uh, you know, um, diversifying revenue. Um, and, and that's fine. And that, that's definitely a good argument for it, right? Um, and, and, and part of the argument is, is it, it's not gonna have any impact on the MPO or its operations and, um, I'm not satisfied that that's, it may be true at the front end, but again, these things always tend to grow over time. And so, um, I, I just, I would need to see some more guardrails around that personally. So.
Anything else to?
That's it.
For questions?
I do have at least a quick, quick one.
Sure.
Um, I know in the past, a few members of the MPO board have not really liked it that the MPO was involved in some of the water discussions for watershed management authorities.
Right.
And I think that is very appropriately connected to transportation. We've had problems with the DOT saying, we don't worry about water and that's to the detriment of some of their transportation projects, quite honestly. So I just kind of want to say, I hope you'll, um, uh, when you go through strategic planning, be supportive of their continued rather limited, but effective work in the watershed related arena that's been very helpful. They're helping to support the Fall County Council of Watershed Management Authorities. And it's, it's been
And I hear you, Susan. I'll definitely take that, uh, you know, into account. Um, but as you, if, if you keep growing that into other areas, you know, watershed, housing, you know, you get into other things. Where does that, where does that get reined in, right? And, and, and how does that impact our mission on transportation?
I'm not disagreeing. I just kind of wanted to put in a
I appreciate that.
Plus, cause I've seen the value, but I know that's been, you know, Tom Hockett Smith and
Yeah, Tom is very much against it. Yeah, he's very much against it. And he's very vocal about that. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know. He has an opinion?
Yeah, I know. It's surprising. Yeah.
So anything else for Ted? Otherwise we might have a video presentation?
We do. First I just wanna, I'm not gonna go through every, for Catch Des Moines, everything they brought in here, but I did find interesting that when we've talked about out of the box thinking and one of the things that, that we did was we brought in, uh, six, uh, uh, influencers, social, social media based upon how big their following was on LinkedIn, Instagram and other platforms. They spent a couple of days in, in Des Moines, some that's scheduled and some of their own, but they were going to looking forward to having some ongoing communication to see, have them talking about Des Moines and, you know, about some of the experiences that, that they've had to continue to, to build up our great city. I did want to show off a quick video here. I thought you guys might enjoy this. This was put out. Thought I just want to share.
I have a nice coat.
Oh, yes, it is. Hit it, Pete.
Hit it.
Fun in Des Moines. Some people might think we like to bide our time watching the corn grow and milking cows. Well, these certainly are compelling options and we really can't show you how to milk a cow. Sometimes our idea of fun is decidedly less corny. Here in Des Moines, we are voted America's number one minor league market and for good reason. We have our own brand of lovable Cubs where you can catch a rising star and if you're lucky, a hot dog. I got it. I got it. I got it. Go Cubs. If you're the outdoorsy type, you'll enjoy our over 800 miles of biking trails, including the iconic 25 mile High Tristle Trail. Seen on Instagram accounts everywhere. Sorry. And you kind of expect us to have one of the best farmers markets in the country and you'd be right. And you can ask 25,000 of my closest friends. And if the indoors are more your thing, we have outlet malls, lifestyle malls, cool neighborhood boutiques, unique shopping districts, and even the self-proclaimed greatest store in the universe. If you want to rock and roll all night and party at least part of the day, we have everything from the symphony and world-class opera to indie bands, arena rock and country, along with two of the hippest music fest in the Midwest. And of course, we have the ubiquitous Brazilian Twins. They won't stop following me around. Whoever thinks Des Moines is boring has clearly never polished off a corn dog, some mini donuts and a couple of craft beers and then ridden the monster. They might regret that. One of your thrills are the OMG, I can't believe I found this dress on sale variety or the OMG, I can't believe I let my kids talk me into this ride kind. Here in Des Moines, we have something for everyone. Isn't that right? Des Moines, the yeses are silent. Our attractions scream.
I wondered that too. Anyway, just want to share that with you guys. We continue to come up with creative ideas and continue to market our great region.
Thank you, Eric. Uh, just a couple of things. Uh, one, I think I sent a note around. We're looking at the mayoral appointments for 2023. If you have an interest in making any changes, let me know so we can take those into account. Secondly, tomorrow is Veterans Day. I wanted to remind everyone of that and to thank our veterans that are here tonight for their, for their service. We appreciate that. Hope you'll also recognize others tomorrow as well.
In follow-up to the presentation we had from the Horizon Center, I did pass on to the Clive Community Foundation that there was openness to having conversation about some community support. And Bob Forte met with them. They are interested in doing some communication and trying to keep the city manager and mayor in the loop as I've known anything because I didn't want to step on anything else the city might want to do, but be aware that there seems to be some interest in working together on that. As our appointee to the Homeless Coordinating Council and Vice Chair of that, there's been some ongoing interest in how to handle extreme weather issues. And that's kind of a special time when there may be need for extra support. So I've also been part of a subcommittee looking at extreme weather issues. And with temperatures about to start to dive here, that will be discussed again. As you know, the houselessness, which is tends to be a term that's used more now instead of homeless has been increasing and there's been more concern about seeing more people without support. We continue to look at coordinating with all the shelters. And I think I've reported before that there is a study to identify why when there is some space in shelters, people aren't taking advantage of it and there are multiple reasons for that. But continues to be a struggle and the city of Des Moines is now looking at hiring a coordinator to deal with the issue. So I think that'll be worth watching. I attended the Capitol Crossroads Big Sort. I don't know if anybody else went through that, but okay, that was fascinating to see the trends that are expected over the next couple of decades. And then a couple of watershed related meetings. So.
Pretty good. Michael?
Do I have anything tonight, sir?
Just a couple of quick things, your honor. We'll have a table Bravo again this year. I know I've talked to those of you who have attended in the past, get that table complement. I get a registration done here probably tomorrow for that to make sure we can hit the city table deadline. And then we'll also anticipate all of you attending at the partnership dinners or get that table secured since we're going to be moving the council meeting to accommodate that on January 26th. Also wanted to make you aware, and I've been mentioning it in my weekly update, but the, on the 22nd of this month will be the first public information meeting on the Hickman Interchange that the DOT is hosting. I know Councilor Jedkins is already attending, potentially Mayor Edwards as well. And we'll have some staff there too. That'll be from five to six thirty at the Walnut Hills Methodist Church there up on the, kind of up on the hill.
They do that on purpose because it's Thanksgiving week and they figured the numbers would be lower?
It, they went, as, as somebody who was in those meetings where they were trying to figure out a date, it, it, they went back and forth on a bunch of different dates. And from the city perspectives, we were like, just don't do it on a council meeting night for Urban Dale or Clive is basically what we told them. So we could, if we, and again, this is the initial public information meeting. But you already have seen a lot of what will be shown at the Tuesday, the Tuesday before Thanksgiving.
I, I meant to mention, and this would be a perfect time for it.
Yeah, we're driving.
I did hear last night from Mark Holm that he has put himself on the lead for the land acquisition of our interchange.
Really? Yeah, he's on the right, he's on the right away team.
Person and lead here, at least I think you have a friendly person that is
He's on executive, you know.
His day job.
Yeah.
And we're actually going to be chatting with him because there's, and we talked about a little bit when it was presented, there's that trail component alongside the, the Love's Ditch. Um, where we want to connect the trail from Hickman down to the Green Belt, but the DOT won't secure that right away for us because it's for a trail and not related to the interstate. But we want to kind of work with the DOT on, is there a gap there? Do we butt it up against their right of way? And how do we strategically work with Loves together on that? And so that's something from a staff side that we're going to be connecting with Mark on and make sure we're putting ourselves in a good position.
He's a big biker. He's a big trail guy.
Right. And that'll be out of the city's dime to do for that acquisition. The rest will be the DOT acquiring what they need for right away. This, this was the only piece that was kind of outside of the right of way that we had to take a look at. Some more to come on that. And also a week from tonight, just a reminder to, for those of you who remember back in December 2019, when we had the, the hit and run case by Indian Hills School, the coal pool and, and then the victim Natalie Miranda. A week from tonight is the TV show on ANE at nine PM called Interrogation Raw. Did I get that right? Where it's actually going to be featured.
What channel is it?
ANE.
Yeah.
Right. And so that's a week from tonight. And I have the reminder in there in my weekly update. If you want to watch that or, or record it, take a look at that. So kind of something different where Clive is featured in an unfortunate case, but one that was
Chief in that, was he interviewed for that?
Yes. A number of us were
Yeah.
Probably edit me out.
So anyway.
Get down on the glare.
That's all I have, your honor. Unless there's any questions.
Any correspondence, Matthew? Anything else for the good of the order this evening? Hearing none will adjourn at seven 59.